twenty-two. The implication they will be a trustee alderer, my allegiance to the right to fight the trustee DB and I'll take the Texas flag.
Pray with me if you will. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together today to follow your path and do your will, to reach out and touch as many people involved in this fine institution as we can. Forgive us when we wander off the path and gently guide us back onto what you would have us doing. We ask you to look after the first responders and in fact, all responders. They are all important to us, whether the first in line or last in line. We ask all this in your sacred name. Amen.
Please join me in place.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please follow me on the Texas flag.
Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, one God, one indivisible.
We have a forum present and a meeting has been recorded. Members of the public may access this meeting through the Texas College website. Insurance update, now an opportunity for members of the public to discuss some topics for discussion on their dress office address with a presentation of three minutes. Any more person like to address the board? Seeing that, we'll move on to the chancellor's office.
Okay, Thanksgiving Day meal, and you have a little handout that we provided you. Look over. It will be November the eighth, ten thirty to two P M. So up here, and if you want to come, you're welcome. Debbie, do they need to let you on? Yeah, if you'll let Debbie know, she'll get you the tickets. And that's all I have, sir.
I don't remember four of the board self-assessment survey results.
Hello. Good afternoon. Before you are giving you the results of your board self-assessment that you did a couple months ago, as you know, this is an annual requirement of S A C S for you to complete this, and any action you take based on the data would greatly appreciate some feedback so that I can include it in the report for our decennial review. I typically just give you a short overview, but you have the major details in your packet. Overall, the average of all the questions for all of you put together was four point seven two out of five, which is a very high, high rating. It's down slightly from four point seven six, minimal, minimal change. We had a much greater number of questions that were rated at the level of five point O this year than we did last year. And this is the list of the ones that you rated the highest in your self-evaluation. And the ones that have an asterisk next to them on the board here are the ones that from last year carried forward, that you maintained the five point O level. There was one that fell off. It was six B, and it only fell down to four point eight three, so it's not anything to be concerned about, but you can see the individual numbers in your packet. Lowest rated? This is only the ones that are less than four point five rating that you gave yourselves. So most of them, as you see, were the four point four three or four point one four as an average of all of your input content. And there were some that remained from last year on to this year as well. Eight F and nine D were the two about supporting the foundation and acknowledge about state and national laws. This is a comparison of the two lowest rated ones from last year and this year. I thought it was important for you to see that the ones that they might not have been on the lowest rated this year because they may have gone up, but it was important to see the ones that you rated yourselves lower and whether you improved or you stayed the same, which is the case here. Two of them, you gave an improving score on, and two of them, you remain exactly the same. And overall, these are the nine categories of the self-evaluation. The board education, you evaluated a little higher than previous year. Advocating for the college, you also evaluated a little bit higher than the previous year. Board leadership went down, not a significant amount, but it did go down a little bit. Institutional performance also went down slightly from the year before. Board CEO relations went up considerably from the year before. And the direction, the questions regarding direction went up considerably. Community relations stayed the same. Policy role went down a considerable amount, more than any of the other ones, and board organization remained the same from the previous year. So this is the summary that I'm giving you, but again, you have much greater detail, and if you have any questions about the information in your packet, please reach out to me and I'll be happy to explain it. But again, the rest is up to you, whether you take action on any of these items for improvement or whatever you want to do, it's entirely up to you as a board. Just if you could let me know, I'd like to document it. Thank you so much.
I appreciate that, Doc. You're very insightful. Good information. I don't remember if I've ever done this before, but S A C S closures.
Dean Harris can come up with this. To let the board know, we, no, I was here at one of the B B B. We probably instead we saw all these locations at one time, so it was a difficult decision that had to be made, but it had to be made. And I know that Dr. A D and Dean Harris have been looking at this for the last five years to see really where we're going, where we can go. So I'll leave it at that and let them continue. But what's the difficulty is like, it affects families, it affects what we're doing around the world, so just thank you.
Yeah, good afternoon again. And before I turn it over to Dean Harris, I just wanted to share with you that the chancellor said Dean Harris, her team has been monitoring enrollments at the continental sites and just what she does for all our areas of them, she oversees. And with that, of course, also reviewing the budgets, the unit trends and staffing changes that have been done over the past years, really involving reducing staffing and making changes of that sort. During the pandemic, while the education centers closed, they closed for much longer than we did at the school, and that certainly has impacted drastically what our enrollments look like. We see more students go into online courses, and so the time had come to reevaluate and see what sites need to be closed. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Dean Harris, so she can maybe more she tell on that.
Good afternoon again. I was reading on behalf of Florida and Consonia. First thing I would like to talk about is the closing process. So we have several steps before we decide to actually close a site. The first thing I do is actually review the enrollment trend and determine how much loss we had over the past five years. I discussed my recommendations with Dr. A D. She goes, she discusses it with the chancellor, and then we proceed if we have approval. When it comes to E S O process, we have to, of course, adhere to the M O U. We actually interact with Mr. Gonzalez and his team because we have to go over the M O U and we have to adhere to the termination and notification process. Mr. Gonzalez will actually notify the E S O in writing of our actual closure date. And in that process, we also have to reach out to institutional effectiveness, that's Dr. Garrett's team, to talk to them in order to adhere to the state licensure officials. We also have termination and notification process with them as well. And then finally, of course, we have to actually have approval from S A C S. And with that, we actually provide a teach-out plan to actually include the active students within the last two years, degree programs, the notification to the students that faculty and the staff. S A C S will provide us with the final approval to actually close that location. Next, I will discuss the sites that are in the process of being closed and the ones that are actually closed. So we actually have Walter Reed National Military Medical Center that's located in Bethesda, Maryland. The official closure date will be February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. We had a hundred and eighty-day notification outlined that provided for E S O and office of state. We notified S A C S on September sixteenth. We actually reduced the site director, reduced the site down to the site director. We actually have a coordinator there, so in order to keep the site afloat until February, we reduced that down to office of state fund, we notified the students on September twentieth. And at that site, we had a total of twenty-six students face-to-face. The next site is Joint Base in Costa and Bolin. We see that official closure date is also February twenty eighth. We notified S A C S on September sixteenth, and that site director actually oversees Bethesda and Bolin, so we reduced down to part-time as of November the first. And we notified those students on September twentieth, and they only had a total of seven students face-to-face. Next, we have Schofield Bears in Hawaii. The official closure date was September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. We notified S A C S in August. The staff was notified August the first, and during that closure, we only had twenty-two students face-to-face. The next site was Quantico in Virginia. Their official closure date was September fifteenth. We did not have to notify S A C S, because we were less than twenty-five percent of lecture there. We only taught the classes, but classes were only online. Staff had no time, no staff at the time of closure, and we notified the students on June seventh. We have Fort Richardson in Alaska. That closure date is February the twenty eighth. Also, we have a hundred and eighty-day guideline as well to adhere to our M O U. We notified S A C S on September sixteenth, and we're going to reduce that. Site director down to part-time as of November the first, and students were notified September twentieth. Fort Seal, that closure date is at the end of this month. We notified S A C S September thirtieth. There was no staff as well at the time of closure, and students were notified on September twenty-seventh, and there was four students at the time of closure. Now, last site in here is Fort Rainwater. The official closure date was July twenty-ninth. We notified S A C S on June eighth, and there was no staff present at the time, and we notified the students on June twenty-third. There was no active students at that location. The site director from Fort Richardson was actually working with those students. So as once we adhere to the code, all those sites, I'm going to populate all the sites, that we will be have remaining left in Consonia. So then we have J B L M. This is geography, please, y'all. Oh, we have, we have Fort Raleigh. We have Fort Campbell. That is Fort Knox. We have Fort Rucker. We have Fort Benning. We have Fort Lee. Fort Bragg, that is Hunter and Empress. Empress is Hunter, therefore based in Georgia. And then we have Fort Stewart, and then we have Hope and Ween. Y'all have any questions? Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. I've got so many, I can't articulate them. So I'll try to remember them all. But the last slide, do we feel good about those, or we just started in limbo at this time with those?
Well, I'm going to have a discussion with Dr. A D next week to review enrollments, to see how they're actually done for fall, too. We didn't have some sites that are probably, probably actually open once we review with Dr. A D.
Second question is, do we, the ones we closed, do we have anybody there representing us to deal with E S O?
So what happened is for some of the sites that have actually completely closed, we have, of course, information is on our website. I have communicated with the E S O director. So if they have any question or any students come up, they know to contact our office and also we won't call. So we don't have anybody, some of the sites are not physically there, say, for example, Fort Seal. We have no one that's actually present at the site, but we do have notification how to contact us. But as far as Fort Richardson and Bolin, the sites they closed later, make sure we actually have a physical presence there.
Yeah, Dr. A D alluded to the online courses as being negative contributing factors as way of helping.
Yes, sir.
If we leave, are we able to get the remaining people, the remaining possible prospective students to use our online as opposed to someone else's online?
Yes, sir. So once we notify students, I've actually called and some of the students, I actually tell them that they can transfer, or they will transfer over to, they strictly online to the digital study.
Those are the current students?
Current students, yes, sir.
What about attracting, you know, future students? It is, are other institutions in its own more aggressive in that regard than we will be able to be?
Possibly, yes, sir. Possibly, because they actually have a physical presence there, and they actually have a representative there and say, hey, look, we took our classes online, and we are not actually physically there. But I do have a report with a lot of the E S Os, and they are still willing to send students over to C T C. And we do still have information there that's actually in the education center. If you don't want to have a physical presence there, the E S Os are still supporting us and will do whatever they can to send students over to C T C for online classes.
And the chair is responding or chest-high near something along the way on what can we do to stop this, not just go to a particular location, but is there anything that the board can do, like getting in touch with our congressman or have the congressman down here or talk to the general officers or?
As far as the site opening, don't you ask?
No, just.
He talked about the general, then. Don, there's nothing that we can do. We are very active. Dr. Carter's with me, I'm very being very active with the names organization with C C M E. Those are the two big organizations, and we're in touch with the veterans groups and so forth. So this is not, this didn't just happen to us, this is happening to every school. And so what happens is, most of those places we closed down, they're using the local, the local college, if you will, just like Florida, we are the local college. They're in the process of revamping and looking at out-of-state schools that are here trying to operate, and they're just struggling along, and they're just, it's the change. It's a total change in the services, all branches of the service, and how they're operating their education, voluntary education programs. And it's hurting, it's hurt, it's hurt the Army, it's hurt the Air Force in recruiting and retention. But, you know, that's beyond our capability, but we're in touch with those folks, we're in touch with all the general officers, we talk to them here locally and for sites also. But it's beyond that, it's in the policy level. And so there's not really anything we can do except to continue to hang on, continue to serve the service members as best we can, and let all the, let the branches know, let everybody know that we're still here, we still have a presence, and we still offer courses online, so that's what we're doing. But the expense of what we did traditionally, old school, with somebody there, that's gone, and we've got to retract that in order to not go bankrupt, let's call it. So it's very painful. I mean, I've got all those sites in there, but we've got to pull back, and there's nothing we can do about it except pull back and wait. Maybe in the next ten or fifteen years, things will change, but it's going to take at least that long for it to turn around, in my opinion, and the people I deal with, the places, the folks I talk to. Dr. Carter may have different perspective on this, and she's on those boards with me, but I think it's very, it's very difficult, and all the schools are pulling back, so.
Well, a question I was going to ask, and not in regard to this report, but some career institute, is that helping us, or do we do anything to?
Southern careers.
They have billboards and ads on T V.
Oh, you're talking about Southern.
So you mean?
Southern New Hampshire?
Nope.
West Governor's in the works, excuse me.
Talking about West Governor Governor's in the works, name?
I don't remember who they are, but evidently they're cracking.
Well, we don't know that. We're, and what I'm being told by the E S O and Ford Hood and the leadership out there is that they're not, that they're all struggling and that they're going to revamp and question that their presence here. And, you know, it's so bad that some of these egregious schools are just coming into the communities and setting up shop, and then hoping the soldiers will come out and sign up, and then they have to pay the tuition assistance, but they're working on policies to try to stop that. So for us in A and M, it's, you know, there's, Jimmy Don Hancock was at the legislature, I wrote some legislation for him to say, hey, put something on the state of Texas that we lost these schools coming in here that they have to pay a fee, because we have to pay a fee. We go to Florida, we got to pay ten thousand dollars a year, we go to California, you know, those are big dollars. I said, we should do the same thing in Texas because we're wide open, we're allowing everybody to come in here and teach willy-nilly. And it's, but it's still that way, so now we're having to rely on our local education folks to help us police that.
Well, although it's a sad report, it was a good report by you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dean Harris.
Any other questions? Moving on to number six is the Ideal Impact Initiative.
Good afternoon. Today, we're going to be talking about some opportunities to save dollars, especially through energy savings on the campus. The college has, in the past, implemented a number of different energy savings projects, most recently in September of two thousand and eight. The college signed an energy savings performance contract with Johnson Controls. It was roughly, it was a significant dollar amount and involved replacing a lot of major equipment throughout campus. The state of Texas has actually issued goals that various state agencies and institutions higher education are to achieve. We set a goal, two percent savings was the goal that we had established in reducing water, electricity, gasoline, and natural gas. In the past, up to this point, we really tried to focus on locking in the best pricing for natural gas as well as electricity. I think we've done actually a very good job, but the electrical contract we have, I think, goes out till twenty thirty-two, and I can tell you, after talking to one of our energy consultants, that we're not going to get that price again anytime soon. So besides that, we've also been focusing in on improving equipment around campus. Mostly, it entails when we do large capital projects. But we have also been on the lookout for opportunities to try and save money through energy savings. How do we optimize the equipment we have rather than spending a lot of additional dollars on infrastructure? So, and I've talked to a number of different companies, and then we were able to have some conversation with Ideal Impact. Just to give you a little bit of a background, they have been, they began working with Christian Ministries in two thousand and nine. In two thousand and fifteen, they expanded the Texas schools and districts and colleges within the state of Texas, and they've also partnered with a hundred and sixty-five school districts and over seven hundred ministries within the state. One of the things that they do that I think is very unique is they look at your existing infrastructure. Basically, we would be focusing in on new controllers as opposed to heavy equipment purchases, like new chillers and everything else. We, as you recall, just spent probably twenty-eight million dollars on infrastructure project and going ahead and continuing to spend money on large equipment and infrastructure is what we were trying to avoid. This is an opportunity for us to maximize the efficiency of the equipment that we have in place and make it work for us by saving additional energy. The project would focus on, as I said, new controllers, rewriting programming, we would be looking at our building automation systems, and then how do we optimize that? One of the issues that we have is that we actually have two separate building automation systems, one that focuses in on our plants, equipment, and other ones within the buildings, and this is an opportunity for us to bring all that onto one platform. We will also look at some weatherization and then training of mechanical maintenance staff. One of the things that we found is that a lot of the equipment on our existing systems, building automation systems, has gotten aged, it's becoming very difficult to find, especially when you look at the supply chain issues that we're having. Just to go ahead, with some of our systems, we're actually having to go ahead and just have it repurposed as opposed to being able to go ahead and actually purchase new. So this gives us a wonderful opportunity, and I think it actually comes at the right time as well. So the project would be, would include no upfront cost to Central Texas College. Ideal Impact came out several, probably two months ago, and actually did a no-cost assessment of what they felt we could save as a college. They're currently proposing a reinvestment that would assist with our new controls, the programming, et cetera, over a little over two million dollars, two million sixty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine to be exact, which would include some new hardware, some software improvements that would really focus around the building automation system. The savings is projected to be anywhere from three hundred and seventy thousand to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and the way that the program would work is eighty percent of those savings would go back towards to Ideal Impact to recoup the investment that they would be making within the campus, and then the college would keep twenty percent of that. So that's roughly seventy-four thousand dollars a year or more, depending upon what we actually see in savings, would then come back to the college, even going through this particular investment. If any particular quarter does not have an actual electrical or natural gas savings, then we would not make any type of payment to Ideal Impact. The payback for the program is approximately eight years. It may be faster if we're able to achieve a greater amount of savings through the program. After that, the college would then see one hundred percent of all savings going forward. Ideal Impact is a member of TIPS, which is what the purchasing cooperative that we would be leveraging for this particular program. And next Tuesday, we'll be bringing forward recommendations to proceed with a not to exceed the amount of the two million sixty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Have to answer any questions.
And when do we pay the two million?
The two million is not actually paid upfront. What we would do is we would implement the improvements, the controls, the building automation system and all that, and then when we achieve a savings in any particular quarter, then eighty percent of the savings would go back to Ideal Impact to pay for the two million dollar investment. You know, we're estimating that the savings would be anywhere from three hundred and seventy thousand to four hundred and fifty thousand, so each quarter, we would be paying back roughly a little under three hundred thousand dollars back to Ideal Impact for them to recoup the investment that they would make.
I guess my question would follow up on that. Do we have an audit set up to track and see if we're actually getting those savings that we're, we would?
Yeah, so the savings are actually based on our utility bills. So what we would do is take our utility bills, we end up forwarding them to them, they would help us in a report. There is a little bit of an adjustment that needs to be made because each billing month isn't always the same, you know, some days, some months you have twenty-eight days, some you have thirty, thirty-one. And then there's also an adjustment for exterior weather, the temperatures. If you have a really, really cold month, there's a little bit of an adjustment there, same thing with it being warm. But we take the actual utility bills, we forward to them, it goes through those two adjustments, and then they would basically calculate savings, and then that report would come back to us, but we can essentially look based upon our utility bills, what we estimate the savings is going to be. But we can essentially look based upon our utility bills, what we estimate the savings is going to be. There is a base year. So when the board approves a project, we will look back 12 months from that period and all savings going forward would be based upon that 12-month base year period. So there are actual savings based upon the prior form.
So our internal auditor would be involved in that review?
We can, we can have, we can have Doug, we can have Bob, we can have, you know, whoever we need to feel comfortable about, you know, we're achieving the savings, be involved in the program, yes.
I know Ideal is a great company, but this day of scams and all, you know, you try to say, okay, we've got to make sure.
No, no, I completely understand. I mean, you know, I I can tell you that we've kind of had a number of conversations with a number of different companies. And this was actually set for the board agenda in August, but we intentionally delayed it to try to continue to work out some additional details, have some further conversations, get into some of the details around how the whole program would potentially work and stuff. And I think are very comfortable that there has been a lot of success. I've spoken to three other locations, actually, Cockus Co. has implemented and they have a partnership with Ideal Impact. Burning College, as well as Cisco College were two other colleges that I spoke to, asking and talking about the program, the benefits and everything else. So I I think we want to make sure that, you know, the college is not being taken advantage of in any way. Certainly, I don't believe that's the case, and that's been the experience from any other school or ISD that we've had conversations with. But certainly, we will have, you know, appropriate audits.
Let me reiterate, I didn't mean to imply that they would be that way, but I just want to make sure we're protecting our.
Yes.
But good report. Thank you.
So we're not actually spinning $2 million, we're achieving savings of about $2 million. Is that what you're saying?
We are going to, the the goal is to achieve over $2 million in savings in roughly eight years. 80% of that would then go back to Ideal Impact as they are putting the dollars forward to make some of the improvements. There's some software optimization that would be implemented, some updates to the building controls as well as controllers throughout the rest of the campus.
Okay.
So the college is not, the college is not, it's in in prior projects, the college has had to write a $12 million check to Johnson Controls or others. In this particular case, anything that is going back to Ideal Impact is being paid for out of our energy savings.
So really, that's it's coming out of our pocket, right?
No, it's coming out of the energy savings from the reduction in what we would be paying in electrical bills as well as natural gas bills.
Okay, okay.
Over the last week or so, I've become aware of hydroelectric activities where they are retrofitting water lines to be able to generate electricity as water flows through. I don't know if they're talking something the size of the CID number. One's four-foot mains or where they're talking about residential two-inch lines. Has there been any, I was not aware of them generating that much electricity out of just the water flowing through the distribution lines. Anybody talking about that?
No, that wasn't specifically related to this particular project, but I think it's something that we can certainly do. We have our own water distribution system and and I could certainly talk to Ken Jordan to see what opportunities we may have.
They put a little flutter valve in there and so as it flows through, just like the hydroelectric dams, it spins a little generator and the amounts are small, but there are many, many opportunities to soak off a bunch of renewable energy just with the water flowing through.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, you know, I appreciate that.
I'd never heard that before.
No, it hasn't been something that's come up in any of our conversations, but certainly we will look into it. I can tell you, we have looked into solar, you know, especially out on Palmer Ranch and shipping and receiving facilities that are a little bit further away, trying to go ahead and determine, you know, when that makes sense. I will tell you, one of the things that this is a pro and a con, one of the things that potentially hurt us were the very good electrical rates we were able to negotiate. Because now the infrastructure that it takes to go and put that in, you know, where is that break-even point? And because we've got such a good electrical rate at least, you know, we're trying to decide, when does it make sense? At some point, we're going to get hit with higher utility costs just based upon the amount we're paying. And so I think if we can look at some of these alternative opportunities like solar, don't know so much about wind, but, you know, the the hydro piece may be a really good opportunity for the college.
Any other questions, Mr. Hoffman?
Lots of interesting, good information. Thank you.
They will move on to number seven, which is the Horton Residence Hall Electronic Project.
Yeah, so if, I I don't know how many of you will remember, but over the past probably six years, every year or so, we tried to reinvest back into buildings, specifically our security system. Initially, we did all exterior doors so that we could, with the touch of a button, we could lock down the campus. From there, we went to cameras within our buildings and entrances so that, you know, we have a a good way of identifying who is entering or potentially leaving our buildings. One of the next areas that we were trying to get into was Warden Hall and trying to update the locks. Unfortunately, last Thanksgiving, we were notified by the company, and this was actually right before we were going on Thanksgiving break, that the locks that, they were the old-style hotel locks. You take a little magnetic reader and you swipe them. That they were potentially going to go, they had a kill date in it, and they were going to stop functioning, which actually happened. And so we had to scramble at the last minute to replace the electronic locks with some key locks as a temporary solution. Ultimately, we want to get back into having electronic access that allows us to better monitor. You're not having any keys. All you have to do is go ahead and replace a Bob or a swipe card. And so we wanted to go ahead and bring this forward. The timing of it actually worked out because of our ADA project. We've got several rooms that we need to go ahead and change out the hardware on, the lever handles, we have the old knobs. Those are not ADA compliant, and we thought this made a lot of sense to go in and try to combine all of this into one overall project. We did have some capital dollars that were available this year specifically for electronic locks within the residence hall. And we'd be utilizing Jamal and Smith, they're the vendor that we're using for the ADA project throughout campus. They're making the improvements within the dorm, and it sort of only made sense for us to go ahead and utilize them for this particular work. They are a member of the Byboard Purchasing Cooperative. The cost is roughly $225,000. And it would give us electronic locks that would allow us to go ahead and actually monitor remotely. We could allow, we can open and close them. We can see who's entering the room. It gives us a lot of functionality, and it's basically the the type of lock we're moving to for this. Happy to answer any questions regarding that.
Any questions, Dr. Lawson? Senator Lemon, we'll go to the Client Felder Incorporated contract option.
Yes, this is Client Felder. We use them for geotechnical services around the around the campus. Haven't used them as much since we had ended the infrastructure project. There was, there was a lot more work when we were doing pads and and other things across campus. But the upcoming capital project, there are going to be some some areas where we're going to need some some services. And so Client Felder has done a good job for us. The period would be for December 1st of 2022 through November 30th of 2023. Estimated spend shouldn't be more than $100,000. I I don't anticipate even with the current capital project that that would end up being the case. So we'll bring forward a recommendation on Tuesday about approving option period two for Client Felder.
Any questions, Mr. Hoffman? Oh, item number nine, Mr. Train, U.S. Incorporated Show replace purchase, Mark Scott Train.
It is? So I think most of you remember back in, when we had our winter storm and, you know, did create a little bit of an issue for us along campus. It impacted some of our fire suppression systems where we had some breakage, some wire lines, as well as some chillers. The chiller at our science center, we actually had two large 160-ton chillers. They, the one is in need of replacement. Unfortunately, the current lead time for the chillers that we currently have are 60 to 62 weeks. So it was important for us to go ahead and bring this in front of the board so we could go ahead and try to get this ordered as quickly as possible. The chiller is a part of the insurance link. We've already had conversations with our insurance adjuster who's through the clearance. They have given us authorization to proceed with the overall purchase. The, a little bit of background is the chiller was initially tested by Texas Air, who was the vendor who actually installed the chiller during the infrastructure project. Unfortunately, during that time, Arc Day was purchased by Train. And so Texas, Texas Air was no longer able to service the chiller under warranty or procure them. The board had actually approved for us to use Texas Air Systems after the storm. But unfortunately, because I can't procure a new chiller through them, I'm coming back today with a request of Train. So Train was able to go ahead and get us, like I said, a price. The cost of that will, should not exceed $400,000, and the amount will be taken care of by insurance. So I I'm more than happy to answer any questions regarding the chiller request.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Good presentation.
You have a number of items on you. The only thing missing is your weight. You always have the high-dollar items.
Well, thankfully, on these, you know, we're we're trying to find ways of paying for the items as opposed to me just coming in. It's very money. We're doing our, we're doing our best, so.
I don't want to attend the sponsorship schools.
Good afternoon, Chairman Weaver, CTC Board of Trustees, and Chairman, Chancellor Yanoffles. For the record, as you mentioned, I'm Ruby Sandoval. And under Board, under CTC Board 427, number 427, the CTC Board of Trustees approved sponsorship funds for events, projects, and activities selected by the sponsorship committee that are over $2,500. Today, the sponsorship committee recommends consideration for the following sponsored requests from charitable organizations under the policy. The sponsorships, if you know, provide goodwill to the community. Thus, in providing goodwill to the community, we get some advertisement out of it and also get some even older perspectives, even older. The following are requests from Advent Health Gold Star Gala, bronze sponsorship of $3,000. The Business Resource Center for $30,000. CTC Foundation, which would include a fashion show, golf tournament, holiday lights, and and a bowling tournament for $12,500. The Harker Heights Chamber Chairman's Circle for $2,500. The Colleen Rotary Scholarship for $2,500. The Colleen National Association for the Advancement of Colored People and NAACP for $2,550, which would be a total of $53,050. The $30,000 for the bronze request from Advent Health Gold Star Gala. The amount provides Central Texas College with a reservation table of eight, listing all printed materials, a listing and all printed materials if we receive by the deadline, I think we have the deadline. And the sponsorship also includes photography partnership, program partners, security partner, live auction partner, and social hour partner, meet and greet partner, raffle partner, invitations partner, venue partner, and video presentation partner, which gives us a lot of advertisement in each of those areas. The Business Resource Center for $30,000 and $15,000 each each semester is a collaboration among Workforce Solutions of Central Texas, Workforce Solutions of Central Texas Centers, Central Texas College, and the Greater Colleen Chamber of Commerce. The Business Resource Center, NLU, creates relationships with various businesses, organizations, government entities for support and recognition of the programs and activities. The Business Resource Center assists with various other things such as building the business community by providing entrepreneurs learning programs and resources to help the business community. The Business Resource Center offers workshops for good and off for those interested in knowing more than when starting a new business or expanding an existing business. Our own Central Texas College Foundation requesting $12,500. The amount requested from the Central Texas College Foundation is for the following events. The Nursing Department Fashion Show, which is $5,000. The 28th Annual Foundation Golf Tournament, which is $3,000. Lighting of the Bell Tower, which is new, at $3,500, and the Bowden Extravaganza at $1,000. The funds raised from from these events will go towards various Central Texas College scholarships and programs refused. The Harker Heights Chamber of Commerce is a request for $2,500. The amount requested for the Chairman's Circle membership includes a wide variety, a wide array of recognition, which is marketing, priority seating, and unique invitation for Central Texas College. Again, that provides a lot of advertisement for it. The Colleen Rotary requested, well, the request is $2,500. The amount requested from the Colleen Rotary provides matching scholarships for students attending Central Texas College. The NAACP will present two grad, is for $2,550, and they will present two graduate and seniors with a Central Texas College scholarship for $1,000 at the Freedom Fund Bank with a table of eight and full ad for Central Texas College and the student program will be 550. I'm available to answer any questions.
The total of all eight requests, how much different is that from last year's total?
I have to get back with you on that for, I don't have that. Thank you.
So my question is, on the Business Resource Center, you said it's a collaboration between Texas Workforce and Greater Colleen Chamber of Commerce, CTC. Do they match the same amount as we're paying?
I'll have to get back with you on also, but they also match amounts.
Well, yeah, because if we're doing $30,000, and where it's spawned, see, those are really large entities. My suggestion is they match what we're spending to get it for lower ours and and make it all even across the border. Yes. When I was going to my package on Friday and stuff, when I saw the amount, that stuck out and.
We have a contract, James, to provide that service at that rate. I can tell you that Workforce provides more dollars than that in Southern Chamber.
They do.
But at least it's set, and our contract is set for two years, probably.
I think there's a couple of years left on.
Two years, yeah.
Okay, so it's fair, it's fair then?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Rudy.
You know, we've made some changes a couple of years ago, and I get, we got into the contract with it. But one of the things I voiced my concern about with the chamber was that they were taking this money and they were promoting it as the Business Resource Center from the chamber. And that's the way, right? We're at least in a third of this, and so that has been changed. It has moved from the chamber offices, the Resource Center, over to the Workforce Center upon Highway 18.
That's good. Thanks, Jim.
Any other questions, Mr. Senator?
Any other questions, Mr. Sandoval? Appreciate it. Number 11 is a recommendation, a topic for the given items for announcements to the board. Something, Mr. Johnson?
I have nothing, sir.
Yes. Sometime in the near future, I'd like to see the update on where we are on that ADA compliance, what they're working on, you know, sidewalks and all that.
What's with Vanny to be known, or?
Yeah. Well, cold package.
Okay.
Number 12 is the announcement of the regular board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, October 25th, 2022, at 1:00 p.m. And workshop scheduled for Tuesday, November 15th, 2022, at 1:00 p.m. Now, the November board meeting, well, it's kept a week, and will be held on November 29th, 2022, 2022 through Thanksgiving, March, so with that, unusual timing there. And in December, because of the holiday schedule and closing of the campus, we'll have a board, board meeting on December 13th, 2022, at 1:00 p.m. And there will probably have a gem item of the audit and kind of limit that if there is anything that comes up, it's an emergency that we need to go over, we can go in that meeting and discuss it at the same time. Otherwise, we're dedicated to our, yeah, our annual audit, and of course, that has to be the state of Texas, you know, like 1st of January, so we, we're going to put to look at it and vote on it before it goes out.
Don't shake it.
Yeah, I've talked to Doug, I've talked to Bob about it, and they, they go with certainty. They don't do their best to try to get it on the table by then. If we can't do it, we can't do it, but at least we're going to try.
And we'll keep you posted on these dates so you don't get confused when you get to November. November is going to be a split now, that's two weeks from, but that's just because of the schedule we have at Thanksgiving.
There's no executive session today, and any other questions or comments? If not, take a motion to adjourn. And, boy, that's holy feet.